You're on highway.
Leading the Select Board of Order.
Yes.
And says, yes, Kathy and Brian and Jeff.
Yes.
Uh, this meeting is being recorded. And first. Item on the agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. There anyone here who wants to make a public comment here or online? Wants to make a public comment on non-agenda item.
I actually have a question. Okay. So there was some discussion on the Facebook page last week about. Scouts not providing parking for singing beach anymore. I'm just curious, do we know um what the impact will be on summer parking? Do we know if somebody else is providing it or we're just going to be short spaces?
I don't know, but Brad.
I don't believe that there'll be. Parking, additional parking provided.
Okay, do we know how many parking spaces we're gonna lose? So it just might be worth putting on the agenda for future. Meeting, losing twenty-five parking spaces and it's a nice summer. You know, are we providing satellite parking at the school?
I discussed. With uh first, I was made aware of this on Facebook. Actually, I think Mark McCoy mentioned it. And then uh. Went out to Facebook. Cheryl called me or texted me on Saturday, find out what I knew. Uh, we discuss options as far as that goes. And so I then touched base with. One of the principals. And he explained why they're not doing it. Uh, and so best my, and then I asked him again if he'd be interested. If the town take, a lot of responsibility, I'm, I'm gonna ask all of us.
Yeah.
There's a lot of micromanaging that goes on from Hobbs' point. As far as maintaining that priority. And Jason Walken just got tired of it, giving up his weekends every year for whatever. And I didn't realize how much he did and I have to respect him for what he did. So I made the offer that if the town were to take over. Totally staff it and manager. Uh, would there be any appetite towards that? And at this point, there was none.
Okay.
Okay, so I would say that we are going to be twenty twenty, not just park, that's not, I mean, we were gonna use it, but I think Cheryl's concept was. Spill all the parking for residents.
Right, right.
Okay, so it doesn't impact, I mean, what impacts is people driving. So maybe we uh.
Yeah, I didn't mean to get into a big discussion now, but I think.
Memorial Day is next weekend, so.
Get it, yeah, so.
Well, it's uh, maybe we stop looking at. The beach.
Schools, oh, the schools are still in session, right? They're still in session.
Sweeney.
June vacays.
And Sweeney has weekends, so baseball going to the middle. So I'm, I'm not quite sure, we can try to revisit it. I got a cold response.
In connection with that, what's going on with the golf carts, anything?
Yeah, I was thinking.
Beach bums?
I'm hearing something.
I think they're go, going off to college now.
Yeah, yeah, like balls.
Nothing, nothing came back.
Yeah, I assumed that they're done.
Yeah.
Oh, and that's. That's even a bigger, you can't even make.
Which is unfortunate, this is all coming up last minute, you know, that's.
Well, I think that we knew about it, I think, I think the Boy Scouts were made aware of it about two weeks ago.
Oh, they were.
Mark mentioned it too.
First time I heard of it today.
First time I heard this on the Facebook.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know. What alternatives there are.
That was a letter in the cricket.
Kind of surprised there was that much.
It had a letter last.
It was too, but.
When I was a kid, scouts used to run it. And they just ran it, that was it, there was no involvement.
I wasn't going to debate. What I was told.
No, I'm not.
You know, because I was shocked, I thought that, I thought the scout leader, whoever shows up, sets up a chair, the kids show up, set up their stuff. And they're gone.
Yeah.
Uh, so to this point. You know, I can try again, but I don't think it's gonna be very successful.
Okay, so the intention is that there will be no parking.
And that's my understanding. Oh, like, uh. I have, I cannot either confirm nor deny.
Okay.
All right, basing this on just the tenor of a text exchange.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I wonder. How the absence of. Some organization, we're right, the, the average point is going to need people from parking there.
That's a good question.
Right.
Yeah, now there's no supervision.
Right, right.
Not that there was a lot intensely.
I, let's, we're gonna have to watch a play out, I guess.
Yeah.
Because there's MBTA parking.
Right.
Right.
Back, yeah.
Okay.
People find out next weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And you want a position to get a little bit more information, perhaps?
Try.
Okay.
Try, I mean, it's uh. I can speculate as to a lot of different reasons. None of which are worth discussing here.
Okay, do you want me to put it on the action item list and?
Yes, please.
Put it in for next, next meeting or?
Well, this weekend isn't looking real good.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
That's good.
Except for you're counting on.
Right.
The beach, I mean, we talked to some local uh. Businesses, they're concerned about it, so.
Yeah.
Dusties, I'm sure problems, they lose some business, you know. Uh, Crosby's will lose some business. So uh. See, you know, everything, I mean, it's gonna impact, so we gotta look at. Well, I just don't know what to do, it was a private, it's a private box.
Right.
It's not like.
Right, so along those same lines, my other question was the, the public bathroom signs were supposed to go up for this weekend, is that happening or?
I'll find out from DPW, I know they were ordered.
The, the ones for, what about the Duncan and the um?
Yeah, I told Dean about those, yeah, so we're just getting our agreements. Sent back, they're gonna start on Monday.
So they're gonna start. Memorial Day?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Memorial Day till Labor Day.
So we should see a sign at Bravo?
I, Bravo and Duncan's.
Yep.
And, and Beattie Hall. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Buy a lunch, please.
Next item is the chairman's report. And. The. First is, as everybody, as I said, Monday is Memorial Day, um, I will be at the service and the parade.
What day is that? I mean, what time is that?
Monday.
Yeah, um, it starts at nine.
Nine at the Legion.
At the Legion.
All right. I'm not in charge of my social schedule, but right now.
If it fits, it'd be nice, I mean, it's.
Yep.
Yeah.
We got this, so, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm babysitting, so if I'm not babysitting, I'll be there.
That's, as, as, as long as somebody shows up, so it looks as if. Yeah.
We don't care.
I know you care. Um, the other. Um. Thing from my report is that I've got a uh. Records request for information about the um rentals from rental. Space, boat spaces for Manchester Marine and um. And we're not talking about this seriously until the fall, but um they have rented. Um, twelve spaces of the ten that they, we thought they were going to rent, they might rent.
I see, I see.
And um they, three are from the waiting list. Seven are not from the waiting list. And two are confusing because the names look like somebody on the waiting list, but they're not quite right, so. Um. Any other piece of information that came from that is that in two thousand twenty-three, Manchester Marine had twelve warnings, warning permits. And twenty-four, they had twenty-two. And in twenty-five, they appeared up thirty-six. Manchester Marine is doing very well on marks. Our warning permits. Um. That is. The end of. My notes, um, do we have anything for action items that we, we?
Oh, on the agenda.
Yeah. Bottom of them.
Okay, um, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the Facility Planning Committee Discussion. Chuck's recommendation and Sarah's recommendation that this be a. Standing committee rather than a task force. Um. That, that we nominate people for. The idea is people will serve three years, but we start with staggered. Staggered terms, so that. We're not replacing the whole committee at once. Chuck or Nate, do you have? Anything beyond that?
No, I think uh you. Butter, put it right out there, I mean, we had the memo, if there's any questions of other stuff, but. It seems like it lends itself a little bit better to a full-time committee because. We just have so much, it's not like we just have a DPW project or just have a. Public safety, we kind of have, you know, everything on the horizon and some, some level, so. Seems like it makes a little bit more sense that way. But open to whatever suggestions or thoughts or comments you guys might have.
Right. It's sort of. Ordinarily, our committees are odd numbers.
You could put a third at large, I guess, I don't think there's a need for. A full-time. Other committee. Um, so, you know, another at-large would be fine, I guess.
Yeah, just a question, Chuck, have, have you had experience or seen this type of committee in other communities?
Um, not personal experience, but I, I do believe that there's a few other communities that have, have done this type of thing before. Um, blanking, I don't have my head where, which ones, but um, yeah, I believe it's been done before.
I'd be interested, no, I, anybody in the, you know, the North Shore in particular.
Yeah.
Because we can identify with their challenges.
Right, I'll, I'll do a little bit more digging on that, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I, I do know that it's been done before, I just don't know where exactly.
I. Once, one more suggestion. And that is that the. Term, the three-year term be applied to the at-large members and that the members that are appointed. Uh, by various committees should be, should not be term limited. Because. Well, with the Select Board, we never know who's going to be here next year, right?
The point, they're kind of term limited.
Right, I guess it would just be, you know, so long as you're on the board and want to keep serving, you would, and then otherwise.
Unless your committee decides you're.
Yeah. Or, or just, you know, if, if somebody wants to rotate off it, you know, then they just need to get another one on.
Yeah.
That's makes sense.
Okay, um, any, Brian, any?
No, I read the memo on me. And uh, I think it's a big sign for Kansas. I don't want to get bogged down in committees, I don't want to get bogged down here.
Yeah, it's a little unclear what the deliver, one of the things we asked for at the last. Meeting were the deliverables. So I, I, there's a lot of, I'm just relooking at the memo here.
So it's, it's down at the bottom, there's like seven bullets, but the most pertinent one immediately would be the basis of design. After the first sixty days or so, you know, I was just putting a number on it to make it timely, but. Um, you know, they need to review the information we have, they need to. Um, you know, hopefully we can take a tour, John took a tour a couple of weeks ago or a week and a half ago. I think that definitely shed some light on what we're up against and what we're lacking. So I think that's an important step, and then I think. We need to finalize our current engagement with our consultant, which would be a. Uh, basis of design report, which is what, so that would be the buy-in that we need to go to the. Um, you know, design phase.
So I, I see a mix, I, I, I think I understand what you're referring to, it says immediate action and commitment, is that the section?
Yep.
Okay, so I see a mix of activities. So that people who join the committee understand what their commitments. Time commitments, et cetera, so I get that, and that's good. But as far as actual deliverables. Or outcomes, I think I see. Two confirm or recommend basis of design criteria. And then.
There you go.
Or recommend alternative use for vacated sites. Those are the only two deliverables I see on that list.
Yep. Do we need others?
I'm just asking to, I would like a clarification, so I think there's. I think we're mixing things here, and one of the reasons we were initially thinking a task force. Is because. Um. In order, you know, how long is it gonna take to complete these deliverables, and if these deliverables are met, then what, you know, what else are these people gonna meet? To discuss?
Well, they would go to the next phases of design and implementation. So that's, that's why it lends itself better to being a standing task force or committee rather than. A task force is because. You know, it would be fine, if you guys don't want to do a, you know, a full committee, that's fine, but. You know, once we get through this sixty days and we do a basis of design. That's not really the end of the story, and so we were hoping to get a little bit more continuity over the coming years by making it a committee, but. Again, I'm not.
Not, I'm not. Pushing back on that per se, I'm just trying to understand, like, if I look at the committee charters for some of the other committees, they will say. Purpose of this committee is to advise the Select Board on X, Y, and Z.
Right, I think we, I think we did say that in the memo.
So I'm just, I, I think maybe just clarifying a little bit. So they know when they're done, the, the reason for really.
There is no done, though. There is no done, it's a standing committee.
And, and, yeah, yeah.
This is the first step, is the uh, this, you know.
Yeah, there, there are dozens, there are dozens of facilities here.
So is their job then to advise the Select Board or just advise?
Yes. That's what we're saying.
Is there anything you could add to this that?
I can add whatever you want.
That would clarify when the committee is no longer needed.
I mean, I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure I can answer that because it depends on when we finish our facilities work as a town.
Which is never.
Would, yeah.
Yeah, we've got. After, after the police and fire.
Exactly, then gone. With our treatment.
Yep. That's probably at that point.
I guess. I guess I would see it being very active over the next decade and, you know, maybe. Only slightly less active the decade after that, but it's a pretty good runway.
So somebody, so somebody, you know, I think as Brian just mentioned PFAS. Is this, this? This is a facilities planning committee, so that would not be in scope, correct?
And in the water facilities, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can draw the line wherever you guys want, I mean, it's, you know, it will be a.
Asking is for there to be very clear boundaries. Because, you, you know, there's your job and your, your organization's job and, and you know what you need to do and just. Be really clear what you want this committee to advise you on. And what is the scope, if, if there's seven things in the facilities master plan. Then let's be clear and list those, I just. Like I said. When we're not clear, it's hard to know when to shut a committee off. And I'm not sure it needs to exist forever.
That becomes. The role of future select board.
Understand, and I, just like I said, based on the activity I did two years ago. It's, it's, there's evidence that it doesn't get looked at, it just gets forgotten, that's all I'm feeling.
I've got a question, um. You had mentioned a clerk of the works associated with PFAS at some point, right, Chuck?
Yep.
Where does that fit in all of this?
So we, we hired the clerk of the works, uh, that was, uh, I believe, um. Will it be one year in Ja, July, Nate, or two years? I think one year in July. So we hired him last year, um, so he was slated, or he is slated to, you know, basically be the clerk of the works for the wastewater upgrades. As well as, as well as the uh PFAS upgrades. And uh, to the extent we get a. DPW facility, you know, to construction in five years, because that one was one that we agree, we all agreed. That, you know, it's five years to get through this first kind of rush of projects, I don't know. I don't know if you really call it a rush in five years, but um, basically those, those three big ones. Wastewater, PFAS, DPW. And then at the end of that five years, it was, that position was supposed to sunset and not be. Um, you know, not be kept on, so that's, that's our goal, that's our, that's what we've, we all agree to. Um, but he's hired, he's, he's working. Um. He's doing a good job, he's very, very helpful in. Getting these projects kind of to fruition.
Okay, should that be another position that's included in this group?
I think I would put that under um me and. Me and Nate to bring him in if needed, but I don't think it's something that needs to be part of the committee.
Okay.
Uh, I have a question, just ancillary, this is for Nate, I guess, what is the status of the uh? One ninety-seven School Street, is that totally clean now, or are we still waiting for uh? Black Earth to get some stuff out of there, or what?
There's still some stuff there, um. But it's, it's, the pile's getting very small every day, so there, the idea was that they're gonna sell the finished compost out of there this spring, which, you know, we're getting towards the end of spring. So uh, I, I think it'll be pretty much out of there, you know, within the month or the next month.
Maybe we can complete whatever studies happen to events.
I didn't catch that, if that was a question.
Then, are we still, there are still some studies that have to be done over there? Or have we?
No, the um, well. No, we're, we've done the investigations on the geotech boring stuff, the geothermal uh well was done. Uh, the survey is, uh, I don't think done, so we probably do need to get the surveyor back out there, but there's no. Study that has to be completed by, for, for now. The, I think the study would be the geotechnical information, which that's, the fieldwork is done, we do not have the reports back.
I think we can all agree that that becomes the long jam right there. Once we get that, we'll need everything else to pass the following place. That's what I think priorities at this point.
Yeah.
Are we gonna do interviews for at-large? For that whole process?
I think that's probably what we need to do.
Yeah.
When do you want to assemble this group? What are we, what are we looking for to assemble this group?
I think. The next thing is to have. A clear statement of purpose. And, and, and there's. A mix of what we're gonna do right now and.
Do we need to list out projects or?
Um. To whom do they report? Um. What?
I.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's, it's tough to list out projects, I think it's, you know, we can, we can revisit it in a year or two years or three years, but. The project thing is a little tougher because. You know, I, I get you want to try and draw a line around the projects and, you know, I guess DPW slash public safety is. You know, the biggest kind of circle, but, you know, we do have a lot of other uh. Town facilities. That seems like was slot into this.
On the lines of this committee exists to advise. Um, the selectmen and the DPW on facilities. Projects.
Right, I think that, I think that's in the, you know, kind of first paragraph of the.
I think it is.
Formal recommendations to the Select Board of Finance Committee regarding. The presidation of and implementation of town facility projects.
Because I think one of the things we're getting off on, you know, in our last meeting was. The, you know, the idea that, you know, we build a public safety or we build a DPW, but then what, what about? The space that's vacated at Town Hall, what about the space that's vacated at School Street, what about? The space that's vacated at Pleasant Street, and so I think, you know, once we kind of get through this next sixty days. We find out where we stand on, you know, all of the above. We then, you know, they make a recommendation, but they're not the ones. That will be kind of calling the shots, it's here's a recommendation based on all the deliberation and reporting that we've done. Um, to back to the Select Board and, you know, the FinCom or. I'm, I'm not married to any of these things, it could be whoever you want, but um, it could be the town administrator, uh, but then. Um, yeah, then, then we have to, you know, move, move forward, and so I think that's the goal.
So, so the intention really is instead of you showing up here very frequently. For permission or to provide information. On what you're gonna do and when you're gonna do it, this committee then kind of is a buffer. And will facilitate a lot of those decisions, they move along, and you, you don't have to be in front of us as much as you otherwise would.
It's, it's not just us, it's everybody else.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Right, so we, you know, this is breaking down the silo because we, we have lots of silos, you know, myself included, you know. The DPW office becomes a silo when we take on these projects. Uh, you know, we go to the Select Board, you know, two weeks ago, but we didn't go to the planning board, we didn't go to Concom, and so even if we had made decisions. You know, two weeks ago, we wouldn't have been able to move on those decisions until then we circle back to all the other boards and committees that are gonna have.
I think it's a good approach, I mean, that's why we approved it, I, I'm just looking for a little bit more clarity around the boundaries. Because anything could fall into the category, there's a lot of things that could fall into the category of facilities. And um, you don't want to get into the situation where you're just trying to, you know, get some small stuff done and then, you know. Trying to advise you on things where they really don't need to advise you, this is for the big things, right, this is for the facilities master plan, um. You know, the, the school committee, when they have their building committees. You know when they're done. Right, and so is there a short list of things?
The school really only has one facility, though.
They start a new committee every time they have a new, yeah, facility.
Right, but.
But the, the problem here is we can't do that because you, like we saw two weeks ago, when we started talking about just DPW, then we started asking questions. About police and fire, then we started asking questions about Town Hall. And I can't answer those questions, so this is my best attempt to try and. To, you know, that committee, and I, I think, I'm not, I'm not planning on going to this committee for. You know, odds and ends, that's for sure, um, so maybe the, the idea is. Capital, but capital can also become a pretty big thing, so. I don't know, I, I think I, I don't have a good way to say it, I'll have to update you in three months, like, we just have to see where we end up.
Yeah.
But it's, it's very much the intent that'll be the big stuff.
That wasn't what I envisioned this.
Yeah. Okay. What I'd like to be. Before we advertise for people. I'd like to have a one-page.
Yeah.
This is the, these are the people we're looking, these are people who will be on the committee. And I think that just the four. Bullets. Of roles and responsibilities. Is enough to get started. This is, the MBC will provide formal recommendations, offer preliminary design guidance, streamline the review process.
I'm sorry, got it.
Yeah. And evaluate. Buildings. Would those four things encapsulate it well enough for you, Kevin?
Yeah, thanks, thanks. Like I said, I just. I have a question, does, does the PFAS remediation work fall into this or not? Because you mentioned it and that.
No, I mentioned it.
I'm sorry, you mentioned it. Okay, I'm just saying that.
I'm protecting you.
That doesn't. Along with my vision of a facility, it's a facilities committee, but if somebody needs to. You know, um, make some enhancements to the process for cleaning water, I'm not sure why this. Committee would have any say in that whatsoever, so I got confused by that.
That's pretty facilities-driven, it's a big addition to the water department.
Yeah. We, I mean, we will have to add a building to the well, which is right in between the two schools and adjacent to, you know, that's the county club, so. They're not gonna be, I'm not asking the facility group to make recommendations on cleaning the water, that will, that would be a mess. I am asking them for input on, you know, there, there will be a, a, a design element that needs to be discussed. Which is, do we match the brick buildings that have been there for, you know, half a century or whatever? Or do we go with a metal clad building, because that's gonna be a cheaper alternative? So there, there may be some input that would be beneficial for the committee to weigh in on, as well as, you know, get input from their member boards and committees.
Is there any way we could just add some? Is there any way we could just add something like for this committee is advising us on? New buildings or um, annexes or additional, you know, something that's.
The reuse of this building is a, is quite a major.
That would be on the list.
Yeah, and it just reuse of existing spaces here, but I just, I'm just looking for a little boundaries that they don't go on.
Harbor Master.
You know, but maybe.
Boundary can be enforced, get enforced by the DPW.
Okay.
I know how you like losses.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I want, I, we have a Sarah Malish there. She.
Yes, Sarah.
Now, I'm wondering if you can reference the twenty-five year facilities um, plan. Cause that's listing all of the big projects coming along. It was in the um, Finance Committee Annual Report.
Was Greg put together?
Yeah, the spreadsheet.
Finance Committee put it together. With Greg. And with DPW. Whether anyone you want, but, but there was a twenty-five year plan for financing facilities and that just might give some framework. Just a thought.
Yeah, I, I think that's.
That's a good guideline.
I think it's a very, it's something clear so that if people bring up. An idea and it doesn't fit into that, it at least forces a conversation.
The harbor master's office.
Yes, yes, it's on the list. So.
Okay.
I, I'd like that. Thank you, Sarah, for that idea.
So.
So that's in the one pager?
I think that will. It, it, it will fit on one page.
Reference to it is, is on the one page.
Yeah, no, we're not gonna put. But yeah.
I can get it to one page for you.
Is there a, okay.
I'll take off, I'll take off the letterhead. It'll be fine.
Okay. So we need to vote on this?
Oh, I really did. What did we already vote? I don't believe we did.
No, let's vote on it again.
Okay. So, subject to. The. Presentation of a one page. What's the name of those things? Charge.
Charge.
Charge. Will be charged for the facilities planning committee. Will someone move? Subject to a one page charge for the facilities planning committee. That we support that and will begin looking for at-large members, three at-large members. Okay, where's the discussion? Yeah.
Yes.
Right, Kathy, yes, Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Okay. So it's mostly the second page of what you said, Chuck. Uh, without the, each quarter committee shall have more, no more than one and, you know.
Yeah, and I'll have a reference to the facility master plan.
Yep, and, okay.
Yeah, no problem. Sounds good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
The next item. Um, on our agenda. Is a, the. Management Plan Discussion and is there someone from the Management Plan? Yeah, you have any comments on the plan that we need to?
Uh, the only comment I did have is um. I don't know what it was, but under the eelgrass part. I was wondering why there was no talk about the green crabs that cause they eat the eelgrass.
Yeah, there's.
Under, they had a whole listing of. Things that were destroying eelgrass. I know that's a major.
When there's anything you would like to state for the shot.
Uh, no, this is just the first draft. Like, I'm waiting to see like. The interest you come back with. Without a review that. Very good mention that's gonna happen. So we'll have to comment.
What Fred asked us for. Wonder this uh. Discuss what you hope the final. Plan will contain.
Be the table of contents.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice if they had a consistent list of what beaches are and which, which ones are private and which ones are public and.
I mean, I, just by looking at what's in their table of contents, it looked comprehensive. I couldn't think of anything that was missing. I think it's important. That we have some public engagement though on the strategic goals.
Yeah.
I wasn't quite sure what. Forum that was gonna. Take place in. At one point they had, you know, the, the thing in the high school have cafeteria and we did the round run-ins and stuff like that. So I just. Wasn't clear what method of public engagement was gonna happen on this.
Yeah, I, I'd like them to clean up. Having just opened to a page. There is an interest in the town increasing its grant writing capability for a staff position. Uh, yeah, we got that.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, I mean. If, as you read it or read over it, you have any thoughts of things where. It's obviously written by somebody who doesn't know what we already have. Yeah.
Got it, okay. Yeah, I didn't spend a lot of time on the details, cause like Greg said, they hadn't, yeah, reviewed it yet. I was more looking at, does it include all of the components? And then my initial thought was, well, these strategic goals. Did we, they came up with these on their own, correct? So I just think it's important to validate those first to make sure, you know, with the publish. To make sure we agree with those and then the rest of it should just kind of. Fall in place. Cause what it didn't really mention was. Our, our harbor is part of our downtown. You know, and there's a lot of discussion about how do we revitalize the downtown and so I look at the strategic goals. I guess you could. Talk about that kind of stuff. The harbor's connection to the downtown and strategic goal one, but it wasn't. So that was kind of gonna be the feedback. I, I gave to them is, um, cause I'm not sure the town is in agreement of what they want the harbor to be. Do, do they? Want more activity in the harbor or do they want less activity in the harbor?
So. Yeah, and what time of day?
Right, right.
And I watched, I watched in a lot of anguish. The expansion of the uh. Red dock.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so. Perhaps our recommendation. To the. Power Management Plan Committee. Is to reach out. To the community about the strategic goals. Well. Doing some cleanup of.
As we talk through this. Maybe discussion with this. This plan with, in the DIP. Uh, chamber.
Yes. So the downtown room is working very close. The chamber is represented on the committee even so. I, I just feel like we're, we're going into a lot of great detail. I mean, it's a great document, but if we don't have agreement.
My opinion is that the harbor is gonna be.
Yeah.
Uh, for revitalization.
Well, I, I think these recommendations. They largely came out of the coastal vulnerability action plan of a couple of years ago. A lot of these things came out here. I agree. When I looked through this and I said they've got a number of these recommendations. What's important? Or, you know, how, how do you prioritize those? And you quickly come to the conclusion, they're not the guys that are supposed to be prioritizing it.
Yeah.
So I, I would like to see a prioritization here because they've got like, they've got like four or five recommendations in each category and I'm not saying. The categories are kind of prioritized, but within each category, there are recommendations that maybe that recommendation one in. Strateg, strategy number three is more important than recommendation number four in strategy number one. I, I would like to know that. And of course, we don't know that unless. They talk to a few people and we get some feedback. So I, I would like to see the results with some prioritization, but they need to speak with some people before they do that.
Well, that's always that, you know, we talked a lot about how the MBTA BIA committee did a great job of public engagement. I'm unfamiliar with how this particular committee is really engaging the public other than, you know, hosting, doing the. Legal requirements. I think this is a big enough deal that we. We may wanna.
I think, I'll say this, I think that although it's a very big plan.
Until something changes and then people. Realize they weren't part of the conversation, so.
But I think we need a finished document to do that.
Yeah, well, I mean, we do a draft and so. I, I just think you start with the strategic goals and then we agree on that.
If we don't agree on the goals.
The rest of it is.
Then the fact that they don't know that we've got a grant writer isn't very important.
Exactly.
Is the engagement of the public in some way part of the scope of this initiative or we don't know?
I think that becomes part of the.
I, I think that's, to, to give us kind of a. You know, a route to follow here.
I think maybe uh, what the plan would be to have distributed by the committee. Right, their comments and then someone come to us. And tell us what they garnered out of this, what they feel and then go from there.
That's the first point, yeah, the harbor, the committee itself. What do you think?
Do their, do their thing, come back to this with, we saw this, we saw that, we can re, review it as well. And we come up to a consensus and then we go up searching for uh. You know, more of an education than input.
Again, I just think there's a fundamental question, what we want the harbor to be. And it feels like the residents, whenever we touch the harbor without them being involved in the discussion, it makes people. Ignatious, which.
They have kind of all of those things down here. It's just, they're not.
They're not one place.
They're, they're not ranked. They just, yeah, we know it could be this or it could be that, you know, I.
Yeah, and you need want the public, I think, to, to weigh in a little bit.
Yeah, they do.
Maybe when, after they were made, perhaps after they review the document, we invite them to this meeting, but we'll be more. Publicize it a little more. Hey, we're gonna have a team discussion on the harbor.
The HAC do their thing.
Yeah.
Let them come to us.
Yeah.
Then we post a meeting.
Yeah.
Post a public forum.
Yeah.
Okay, this is not the HS.
It's a separate committee that was.
Have we named it yet? Rather than subcommittee?
River Management Task Force, wasn't it?
That's a lot of words.
Management Task Force.
I don't know who's on this.
Sarah's leading it. Yeah, Sarah Creighton is leading it.
Okay.
And they're having a meeting on Thursday at five.
Oh, good.
And. I will. Be there and say that, that. We think. That they need to validate the goals. More broadly than just in their committee. Okay, the second part of the Harvard updates. Is um. Setting up. Listing the harbor, the mooring transactions. It's a mooring created. Who would get assigned to, where did it assignment come from? And I think Greg is looking, was looking for us to tell him that yes, we wanted that done and. I think it makes sense to start with the most recent and work backward rather than starting ten years ago. And just require that the harbor master produce this.
I agree. I think, I think that, like I said at the last time we discussed this, the. Bylaw was looking for some type of transaction record. I forget exactly how it was phrased, but. When I looked at what Byon had, we, we don't have that. And I, I use the word audit trail. You know, something that you can just, it's, it's like a general ledger type. Tracking and we don't have that right now. It can be put together, but that is a lot of work. Um, so we start fresh with going forward, making sure we have it. And then, like you said, start with the most recent stuff and.
Work back.
Work backwards. I would also suggest identifying, there have been some specific moorings that have come under question. And I would include those in the early.
Early part.
Early part, the first part of it. I, I think that's all we can do though.
And how far, the problem is. To go back further than two thousand twelve, there's nothing.
Right.
I don't think we'll ever get that.
You gotta decide how far back you wanna go.
I'd say five years. And then I would also say that. The bulk of this work, we tabled this until the sprint fall anyway. And I think we can kick it around a bit, you know. Give the harbor master that going for everything he lists, this is the new format we wanna see. But as far as any real heavy lifting at this point, I'd like to do it going to the season.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't want, I want, I want him on the water.
I want him on the waterboat. Can't we hire an intern?
Some of the information I think is in Byon's head.
Yeah, some, some of it is, you're right.
There are places where it's just complete, at least from the information from the. Um, list, the, the change list, the waiting list, the mooring list. We have to know that this person inherited a mooring from her father. She's married. She's got a different last name. And that is, as far as I know, not in the records anymore.
Yeah, so I think that as we go forward. We'll come up with a format, as you said, going through it, starting fresh. But as far as uh, forensic detailed analysis.
It's not there. I sat, I sat with Byon for a few hours one night going through it and it's not. You could spend months going through and trying to do that. And you're not gonna get anywhere. You need, you need to start and pick a point, you wanna say is five years. And then just whatever going forward, that's what you're gonna do.
I would start with right now for this season, making sure that if there were any changes, right? And then to Anne's point, let's start working our way back. Maybe we get as far as five years, but maybe we. Realize we can't get any further back than three, but I would recommend that whatever, at whatever point we. Let the boatyards have some of these additional moorings. I don't recall when that was.
Well, that's a separate subject.
But, but, but there, if we gave the moorings, they're gonna be part of the transactions.
Yeah.
Right? And so all I'm saying is whatever year that was, I don't remember. It would be nice if we could at least get that, two years, okay? It would be in, at, at least nice to get that two years. Right? Cause that's where a lot of the questions came up too.
Jeff, when you sat with Byon, how many transactions on average a year?
Maybe ten to.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that was my impression. I think I saw Reds. In fact, I think I read a report. It was in the draft of the uh, the harbor. The harbor uh, report here that we just went over. There was a page on that.
Anything like really above fifteen would be a huge year.
All right. So that's not a lot of data points.
Yeah, but it's a lot to go, to go back.
If you add up 30 years or 20 years, yeah, it's a lot. Okay.
Starting now, any new transactions should be immediately recorded.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that audit trail type.
And it's something, I mean, this is all going to be done kind of internally somehow.
Yeah.
I think we had, I mean, there's a new person coming in in the, the accounting area.
Right.
And maybe, you know, this, this is what they do. And the fact is, is that's a new person, but the job description didn't change so much. And so maybe there's a little bit of time.
Absolutely.
I like that idea because you know what? It's completely independent from the.
All the other stuff.
Yes. And so that would be a good way to independently get the, the journal entries and the transaction list, meaning to the way it should be.
But we need to come up with wording exactly what you want. So there's no question, a year from now, six months from now, what we're asking the harbor master to do. It needs to be exactly spelled out what we want.
So every, every transaction is accompanied by one or two sentences, this is why this happened or something.
Well, I would say first, I mean, what you're talking about is a database, right? And, and what you're talking about is what fields do you want on that database? So at a minimum, there should be a field that identifies this is a new, you know, an add, a change to a mooring or a delete. You know, we removed a mooring or whatever. Probably not many of those, right? Add, change, delete. And then when you get into the changes, then you want to be more specific about, okay, what are we trying, what types of changes are we?
I see there's a text field on every one of these.
Name change, yeah.
No, no, please, not an auto, not an auto code, but it won't be allowed, you won't be able to allow to go to the next field.
So as, as a former IT professional, I really don't want to design this right here. But I think at a minimum, you want those words, add, change, delete on each transaction. So you know what's happening.
But at some point, we're going to a new database.
Yeah.
And all that is not going to be part of that database. So this is going to have to be separate.
I'm sorry, what we do is.
There's an application, a commercial application for managing harbors. And I would be surprised if it doesn't have something that tracks mooring changes.
That's what they do.
It should be, yeah.
What I'm saying is not with the detail that we're looking for.
Well, we won't know until we look at it.
Well, that's what I was told from Biblehead has the same system that we're going to.
There's ways to add additional detail to the systems even if they.
Okay, I think what we have agreement on is that in some form, the harbor master should track mooring changes going forward, starting immediately.
Yep.
Starting now.
Yes. Is there a motion?
The motion that the harbor master start tracking going forward. Everything that's involved in mooring changes. And I, you know, I don't think we can define exactly what specific things, but he knows.
Now, see, we can't, we.
Can he?
We can't leave it like that because you're opening the door for someone to say, he didn't do this, we told him he should do it. That's, that's why we are where we're at right now.
The bylaw is well intentioned, but not specific enough.
Well, and we're not in a position to spell this out because we don't do this. And I, I, I'm not sure how you, you know. You know what? When you see it, you say, oh, that's a good piece of information to have.
I think we should take a look, see what the new database, the new software is gonna give us. When is that supposed to be?
All right. So how's this motion going to read? Because we're not going to wait for that.
Yeah. Let me suggest that the harbor master starting immediately keep a transaction log of mooring changes, including creation of a mooring. Assignment of a mooring to a person from the waiting list with a position on the waiting list.
Yeah.
Of.
A family member.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure that you can give it to a family member from the waiting list.
No, I'm saying you gotta say from the waiting list, from a family member, from the change list, wherever it came.
Isn't it just really a name change, period? And then you can, in the reason, you can designate why the name attached to the mooring changed. It was inherited from a family member. A woman got married and changed her last name. I mean, what you're talking about is name changes, right?
No.
Well, not just name change. I mean, if you came from the waitlist, you'd be a new.
Yeah, it would be nice to have.
Wait, okay, a new assignment from the waitlist or a name change.
Or a change, or from the change list.
So that's a change of location, right? Because you moved, that's different.
Right. But so your number's going to change.
Yeah.
I used to say anything that's relevant, you know, it's, it's a lot of different stuff.
But you can get specific, John. We just can't design it at this meeting.
No, we can't.
But so we just have to wait until we can design it before we ask him to keep any kind of a law?
No, I, I, I think we ask the harbor master to keep a transaction log of all additions, deletions and changes to mooring assignments. And then these specifics of how that is implemented will be determined based on the new software that is.
Maybe. You don't know that yet.
Yeah, because you finagle this stuff, you can, you can, you can track this stuff. But I think what we're, we want to be able to track, have an audit trail of how a mooring assigned or reassigned.
Right. I totally agree that with that part. Just, I don't want to leave the door open for somebody to come back later.
So the reason someone came and brought this to our attention is because there is wording in the bylaw that is too vague. And the author of the bylaw felt that it was not being implemented. Okay. So I think the other action we have though is to enhance that bylaw to be more specific.
Right. I absolutely agree, but I want to make sure that we do that.
Yes. And so that should be part of the, we, so we want the, but maybe the motion is that the harbor master must keep a transaction log and you know, for all the reasons I just said, and that we, I'm sorry, the select board sometime over the summer, pick a date and update the bylaw to, we can't update the bylaw. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's.
That's right. And to propose a bylaw change for the Fall Town Meeting.
But is it a bylaw? It's really the harbor regulation.
No, this is a specific town by law.
Yeah, it was in the by, so maybe Jeff, to your point, we kind of get this all cleaned up. And the end state is a proposed change enhancement to the bylaw for the Fall Town Meeting. And maybe you have to have everything all on your note by then.
And I suggest that we now, harbor master track transactions, track mooring transactions in any form he wants, subject to our approval later next week. Gets us out of the designing it here.
Yeah. Why don't you use the word details in this? A lot of little information.
Yeah, right. But you won't be able to actually finalize anything until he, so he may have to come back to us again. Once he implements or decides what he wants to do about that software.
I'd like to get him started.
Yes.
And then even if it's not perfect.
Iterate through.
Iterate through.
Yeah.
What about?
Debbie, you got that? I'll figure it out.
Yeah, that's.
Are you?
Hey, I don't know.
You seconding anybody?
I, I, let, let me.
With the motion, I'm not even sure it was.
I know.
Let me, let me suggest. Now, I move that the select board require the harbor master to begin tracking mooring changes in a format of his choice to be validated by the, at the next select board meeting.
Second.
Okay.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Yes.
Girl, Brian, yeah, one of those things. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I understand.
But you talked to Byan?
What?
Yeah. Okay. Cause you're really kind of the conduit in terms of how things. It's, this is hard sitting here.
No, I just, I don't know. I just want to make sure it's. I don't want to be back here in six or eight months.
No.
No, you need back here in three weeks.
Well, that's.
You sat down with him and you know what you saw.
Yeah, I know. It's all right.
Okay.
Ben.
John. Fire Department's Pretty Emergency Structure Plan.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
So this came up at our department head meeting and Greg recommended just to kind of enlighten you on our pre-plan initiative that we plan on undertaking over the summer and the fall. This is to evaluate mainly the access to properties, driveways, look at tree, overgrowth, et cetera. And if we find any issues that would impede fire department emergency access, that we notify the residents of our findings and recommend changes. There's no you know, teeth to that. It's just best practices to allow entrance and exit to, of their residents or their common driveways.
Okay. So this is in addition to the information that is provided on the website, the fire department website, right?
Yes, exactly. So we've actually had a great response from the residents in regards to our community connect, where residents have gone in, added specifics to their residents, maybe specifics to their household members, depending on their medical emergency issues, et cetera. This is purely looking at, you know, driveway entrances. How this came to be was we were on Proctor Street for a fire alarm activation. And there was two stone pillows that were erected at the end of somebody's driveway, which did not allow for a fire department engine or ladder access. And upon speaking with the resident, it was just because they didn't even think of it. So they're already in the process of moving that. And this kind of just snowballed into a department-wide effort that said, hey, this is good for, we have a lot of newer members that didn't grow up in Manchester. So community awareness as well as pre-planning, which will make our response a lot more streamlined.
So you're going to go through the town, house by house, contacting the homeowners and saying, when can we come by and take a look?
Yeah, I mean, the majority of it, you know, I view Pleasant Street, for instance, a lot of them are going to be drive-bys. Yes, this is where we placed the ladder. If there was something, we wouldn't even really have to access somebody's property. Some of the longer driveways that set off the road, the crews would walk in, drop off a pamphlet, something like that. And just say, hey, you know, this is kind of what our initiative is and get some feedback from the public.
Okay.
I don't know if this is a nice segue for it, but when I was on the ZD, I was just remembering. House numbers. Visible house numbers. Is that a problem for you?
It's gotten better as houses are turned over, part of our smoke detector and carbon dioxide detector inspection. One of the master laws is that there's a visible house number. So now that there's actually teeth to that regulation, we are seeing much better compliance with that. And if we go to a house on a medical or a fire emergency, we notice there's no house numbers. Or sometimes the numbers are so subdued that in the middle of the night, we'd never see it. We recommend some changes to the residents at that point as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying to do site visits on ZD. At one point I wanted to do what Realtors do, but you know, we'll come and put some balloons on it. A lot of these houses you couldn't find. So I just, is that, is that something that is a requirement? Or is there, is there a minimum standard as well for the?
So there is a state law regarding numbers as part of the 911 statutes. We have typically in the past only enforced those during the sale of a property. However, that would be one of the things that was noted on our report to the resident. If we found some things that could increase our, or improve our response capabilities.
So what about the, for the multifamilies, you know, some of our multifamilies have the lock boxes. Would you do a key check as part of this or would that be a separate thing that we have to request?
So those key checks of, those were done. We do those annually. We go in, add WD-40, check to make sure the keys are still active and working. So those are actually used quite a bit. And most of those lock boxes, especially in the multifamily residents, we actually utilize fairly frequently because we're a lot, at a lot of those addresses on a more common basis. Probably the easiest thing to discuss tonight, I hope.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you very much. That sounds like a great program.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the flags policy. And we've been divided with some flag policies, flag protocols of and when we, when I worked on the flag policy fairly deliberately did not include how many days for the president and so on and so forth, because we do say that on occasions designated by the United States, the Commonwealth and the select board and listing them specifically didn't seem like a great idea. And the policy on the when it's raised, it's raised to full and lowered to half is part of the regulations in the United States code. But having specifics about what the select board what local people would do, it seems like an excellent idea.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we go through the you get in first, second page, number six. The decisions that the select board would make.
This is on flag protocols?
This is on flag protocols.
Yeah.
Six, seven, eight.
So it was what we experienced.
So was he active?
He wasn't active.
You could say retired too.
Um, but it's three days, not a week and a half. Okay, so active or retired?
That's a, that's a long list of people.
Yeah, retired is a very long.
So I, I think that's why that says active, otherwise.
Yeah.
That can be quite. I grabbed this from, I grabbed this from Rockport, so.
Oh, is this a? It's very odd.
That's probably the reason why they only did active, though. Yeah.
Yes.
I can't, I honestly can't remember why, but I could back. I'm sorry, is this draft? It was a draft. Yeah. This is a draft document. Yes, the way, yeah. Yes, the way, yeah, the way Greg, they, I wasn't here and did the packet, so.
Okay. So this flag protocols thing in all of Canada is a.
Correct. The way it's supposed to look.
Yeah, because I never saw.
But it's a proposal for us to consider.
Okay, thank you.
The one that says it's policy twenty-three dash two is in fact a policy.
Yes, I look at twenty-three, too. That is, means nothing to us.
Look.
Word eighty-nine. Our po- our, our, our policy, I think, is like eighty-nine dash.
Twenty-three dash two. Yes.
Maybe you got renumbered.
It was eighty-nine dash two amended to eighty-nine.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Amended.
It was amended and it, it changed numbers because of our consideration.
Um. Could we uh, consolidate? Since all of them are the same length. A current or former select board member, a current select board, yeah, six, seven and eight.
Yes.
Consolidate.
Consolidate those.
And I, I, I'm just looking at it. I have no problem consolidating, but a current or former. It starts to be get a long, long list of people. I would just say current.
Okay.
For all of these people.
I want to be, I have to die in office.
You don't die tonight.
It's still time, John.
I haven't told, I haven't told. I haven't told by eight o'clock.
So.
Eight o'clock, I'm about to die. I'll see if I can accommodate people here.
I mean, yeah.
I just say goodbye.
We have hundreds of all in.
We do.
Yeah.
And in fact, the only one that is former is the President of the United States.
I'll say free court justice.
No, all of the other ones. Oh, well, it does reset retired chief justice, retired chief justice.
Subject retired chair.
But, uh, you know, it says the Vice President, but not the former Vice President.
Right.
So
Yeah.
They put the President and they put the Chief Justice on the same category, whatever.
So those came from the state or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
But every, everything else, you have to be in office when this happens.
Yeah.
And I think this is reasonable.
So we're getting rid of former member?
Yeah.
Okay. Same with former select board member?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That'd be nice.
And, and just a list of them and then three days. Or.
Just three days. Now, were you trying?
Three days are interim at whichever is first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Which are recurred first, okay.
So that goes under, just playing the flag at half staff, um. I'm now looking at thirty, twenty-three.
Yours, okay.
Um, one of the small change I'd like to see is that commemorative flag should be emboldened, underlined.
Okay.
On, uh, the display of flags?
There's displaying, there's displaying, displaying the flag, displaying the flags at half staff commemorative.
Yeah, the, oh, yeah, I see what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah. But that's another major heading, heading.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, on the commemorative flags, uh, they're only supposed to be on one specific poll, correct? So do we want to?
Yeah, I don't.
I've got, uh.
Spawned a discussion at the last meeting. It wasn't our flag policy so much. It's, it was about the logistics of the polls weren't documented anywhere.
I have.
Someone suggested that we refer to the new flag pole as the community flag.
Town flag pole?
Well, I think that becomes.
Well, we have lots of town.
Lots of town flag poles.
Well, that's correct. And could you fly commemorative flags on, other than the town flag pole?
No, let's call it the community flag pole and that, that ice is, that's a big.
Or is that the only flag pole from which commemorative flags fly?
Now we get into that slippery slope again. If we kept one spot, one flag pole and that's if you want to, if someone comes, they want to fly something from the community staff.
It requires a proclamation.
Same, same policy.
The only thing that's missing is the actual logistics, because I think the intent of the new poll was that to have that be the place. So those logistics.
We now decide here now that that's now the community flag pole and.
Um, I.
Flags will fly only from the flag poles and these are the, um, criteria for, on the community.
We did designate it, uh, the official town flag pole in a motion on September third by you.
Was forced into.
Move that the select board designate location number two, because we were just saying, okay.
Okay.
As the location for the official town flag pole, the town of Manchester by this.
Can we amend that to say that flag pole number two from, as the community flag?
It was location, we were.
Location number two. I think it just makes it so much simpler.
Well, what makes it, would make it simple and easy for the residents to understand if whatever our decisions were or are, are actually documented in the policy and not just on the meeting minutes. That's the problem is that John had to go research.
I went back till I saw the discussion.
That's the only place our decision was documented.
Pick that up? I don't know.
What?
Were you using AI in September?
I, yes.
Okay.
That, that's the issue. The decision needs to be memorialized in the actual by, or whatever. So, I'll file.
Uh, okay, so that needs to be in twenty-three dash two, correct?
Two, on the second page. The select board, we authorized the display of commemorative flags at.
At, specific, at the town flag.
At the county flag pole.
It's not the community flag pole, is it?
I, I would be specific about the location of that flag pole, because someday the five of us will not be sitting here and they.
If all goes well, I'll still have a. Flag will be at half staff.
All right, but next to the town fountain or I don't know. Okay.
And then.
But how, okay, that, that's a nice designation, where do we put?
To, okay, yeah, so.
In, right in that spot.
To the left of the, uh, well, could be the right thing with your thing.
Next to the town fountain?
Adjacent to the town fountain.
T O W N E, because that's the guy's name.
T O W N E. Oh, I get what you're doing.
That count.
So now if you want to really get messed up, we call that the town flag pole and it's C O W N E.
The town flag pole, T O W N, next to the T O W N E.
Oh, good lord.
Only a small T O W N with this conversation happening.
All right, I have, I have another question. And that just relates to the flags that are on the pole at any point in time. I did do a survey and most of the town, you know, there aren't very many towns that have a flag policy. And those that do, the majority say, if you're flying a commemorative flag, that's the only flag that's on the flag pole. It does not fly below the American flag.
So it's an American flag on there.
That, there is under, when there's something else on there. But, um, otherwise, they put the commemorative flag up there and that would be flying by itself.
So, but let's say, an example being, so the little E town, flag pole, right? Uh, county has the American flag and the town, yeah, town flag. If a commemorative flag is to be flown, those two, those two flies get struck.
They get to come down. Right. And I know we have problems because our flag poles aren't that high and you start to run out of space, especially if there's a half mast.
So when there's a commemorative, I have no problem. If there's a commemorative flag, then now the flag would be on the pole.
Yeah, you put it up there for whatever, the point in time, whether it's a month or a week or whatever it is. Um, the majority where I could find a statement, a lot of times it's not stated, but, uh, there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and that's what they said. Eight towns.
And so if we went with that approach, we still have the American flag flying.
When there's nothing else going.
Well, but there's the other flag pole.
So, yes.
Which is
Yeah.
On town property, right? Which by the Veterans Memorial with the M I A P O W flag. The other question that came up is whose poll is that? I, I think the answer is, is a town flag. It belongs to the town and decisions about what flies on it are made by the select board, I thought, still, because we made the decision to not put a commemorative flag on that anymore and move it to the others. So by following the logic, that means we make decisions about what flies on that town flag pole that is on the, um, uh, on the, um, veterans, um, honor roll.
Yeah, I mean, I think we make the decisions, but I don't think we manage that. I think.
No, no, but I, there's, there's decision-making and then it's how it's managed. And I just think for clarification, we should document in this that that is still a town flag pole and what is decide, you know, whatever flies on that is decided by the, the select board. However, it sounds like we have, um, not outsourced, but delegated management of that poll to the Legion.
I think what we should say is that that flag pole is an integral part of the honor roll and should fly the American flag and the POW flag.
But if that were to, but I would also just specify, because that, that is what select board voted on before. I just would make it clear in the documentation that that could be changed by a vote of the select board. Because you just want to make it clear.
That's just, uh, it's, it's just one additional sentence at the top of that paragraph that says the select board will authorize the display of all flags on all.
There you go.
All flag poles.
On town property. Property, yes, yeah.
And then, and then you just continue on with the sentence that exists.
And then just a, uh, clarification. We have commemorative flag flying at full height, full staff and American flag. There's no flag supposed to be higher, so if we drop the American flag to a half mast, half staff, commemorative flag has to.
Yes.
Okay, that's subtle, but.
Yes.
Correct. Okay.
Okay.
Did you get the additional sentence?
When other flags are flown at half staff, the commemorative flag will also be flown at half staff.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't get the sentence where we. Maybe we need a sentence.
The first sentence on that should be the select board will authorize us to display of all, uh, of flags on all flag poles.
Okay.
Can you say the, uh, what happened in Providence? Do you read about that? City council voted to raise the flag.
Oh, I saw that.
So I'm glad we have a policy in place.
That's their prerogative, yeah. We don't live there.
All right, so you just add that one sentence right at the top.
Okay, the select board may authorize to.
Will authorize or authorizes.
Okay, authorizes the display of flags.
On all.
On all.
Flag poles.
On town.
Town property.
On town, yeah, because we don't deal with the school.
Yeah. Okay.
Period. And then you just continue. The next sentence is the sentence that exists.
I just.
Although we had, we made the distinction between town and town.
Yes.
I'm not going to hear that. Okay.
So the select board authorizes the display of flags at town-owned properties.
Right.
As an expression of the town's official government speech.
I wouldn't even.
That's important.
That's important.
Yeah, yeah, yes, but that's, but that is the next sentence. That's in the.
So, so John, I think the only concern with modifying that first sentence, as you suggested, it's right in the middle of all of the verbiage around commemorative flags.
Okay.
So I agree that we should clarify that the select board has, you know, the authority to, um, authorize the display of flags at town properties, but I just wouldn't put it in the middle of that whole.
Start up.
I, I would take that.
Philosophy, which is the first, absolutely first thing. Flag poles, old or maintained, serve as a non-public forum for the display of governmental uh, had non-governmental flags authorized by the select board. I think that covers and doesn't say which particular poll, but they are owned, owned or maintained, I think, covers both the polls in front of town.
Are you saying that this sentence may be redundant?
I'm, I'm saying that this is that's the, the philosophy. That's the foundation.
I, I'm, I'm thinking that that sentence may go under the policy, because the title of that is display of, of the flags and that's what we're really talking about.
Oh.
Which is.
Just lost my place.
Right here. Under policy of display.
Yeah.
It says, display of the flags and what we want to say is that the town has the authorization to decide what.
I think the philosophy says it very clearly.
Okay.
Owned or maintained by the town of Manchester. Display governmental, non-governmental flags authorized by the select board. Then we're adds, add some stuff in the half staff.
Yeah, that's, um, you know.
And I think we can leave the flag board may authorize the play of commemorative flags at town-owned properties.
No, uh, yeah, correct.
So.
Now it just opens up to, oh, then if you can, if the select board can decide on.
I just want, I want to know the change that you made.
I want isolated.
You have to specify that flag pole in that sentence. You have to do that.
Okay, so all commemorative flags go on.
The town flag pole.
You know, you're just positive. This is gonna be problematic.
Okay.
And you'll hit the fountain in front of the other hall.
Adjacent to the town fountain.
Okay, for policies, we need a first reading and a second reading.
Okay.
Can we take this as a first reading?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and, um.
Yeah.
Address it. There's nothing in this that says that we can't take down the American flag and we're flying a commemorative flag. So.
Nothing right now.
The problem you know, as of Memorial Day, um, we're going to be flying a commemorative flag. Not Memorial Day.
No.
June first.
Week after.
The week after.
May thirty.
May thirty-first.
Yes.
Saturday.
So on that Saturday, we will put up the pride flag and take down the American flag from that pole.
Right.
That flag, that was the only flag from that pole.
And we'll have a flag on that pole. And that will solve the problem of too many flags for half staff.
Right.
Right.
Okay. And we need to, as a part of the first reading, we, we need to put a sentence in that, for that flag pole, the American flag does come down.
We, we can decide anything we want under this.
Uh, that's correct. The only thing we, the only thing we're tying ourselves to is that commemorative flags go on that flag pole.
Yes.
But beyond that.
Yes.
We can say alone, we can say with the flag at this point. We just know that that flag is going on that.
I just like to keep it simple. It's.
Okay.
Uh, you, you may certainly speak, but you need to identify yourself.
Uh, we set up with you, but we for it. And I think all of the conversation is helpful because of the, the challenge, should the pride flag be under the American flag and then be a reason for half mast? So you've all resolved that by taking the American flag off, letting the.
Right.
In this instance, the pride flag go by itself.
So the pride flag or any commemorative flag at half staff will still be, won't be below, will be right, it's still at half staff.
Right, so on May thirty-first, in this instance, the pride flag goes up by itself.
Right.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's what we'll do. It's not written in writing, but we can call that shot every time.
Yep.
But that's the way many towns are doing it.
Okay.
Very good.
So it'll be brought back at the next select board being for a second reading.
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. And the next is a follow-up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I am asking you, with permission to work with town council, put together a home location, um, consistent with the town meeting vote.
I move. So moved.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we should probably vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah, Brian.
Yes.
I have a vote.
John's, yes.
She's already dismissed me. I'm gone.
You're still alive.
No.
The next thing is liaison updates.
Uh, let's see, what have I got here? Nothing too much in the library. I can say the library was talking about having some sort of a facilities committee in the past week or two, but that gets folded into what Chuck is.
Right.
It's another building that, or whatever's going on there, facilities wise, that's fine. The DPW, and Chuck mentioned, so I, uh, two weeks ago, I went in there and said, I want to see the DPW. And Nate said, well, we're going to meet at the fire department to start, but why don't you come there and then we'll go to the DPW. It wound up being a tour of the fire department, the police department, our DPW, and Essex's safety complex. Every one of us should go through those tours and see where, where we stand. And I'm not saying Essex is a bar. It is a bar. They got a lot of stuff there. Have any of you been through that facility?
Yeah.
I have only been to the meeting one.
It's a classy joint.
And the roof is failing.
The roof is down.
Oh, I didn't hear that, but it was not a rainy day.
No, it started when they built it, right? It hasn't been right since they built it.
Okay, well, you can't tell that from walking through. It looks, it looks really good.
And why they were handing out little big roses everywhere.
The, the other thing that I'm holding out, and I think it will sometime in the next couple of weeks, I want to go through another DPW facility on Rockport or something like that.
Well, Rockport is currently building a new one.
Yeah, I don't know where they are. Maybe that's, that was mentioned, but if it's not operating, I don't. Okay, then I don't want to, I want to see something that's.
Yeah.
You might want to also do a drive by in Milton, a much larger, much larger town.
Nate, yes, Nate showed it to me. Yes, that's where the golf course used to be.
So I mean, it's, and they've got.
And I may arrange that, but it, it's good perspective to go through all of these places and see where we're at and where these places are at and where our bar might or might not be in terms of what we want, what makes sense. But we're, we're struggling with some of these facilities. There's no question. Historic District Commission, June 5th, hearing on cargo, public hearing. Perhaps the only public hearing on that space. It might be continued to the next month. I don't, we'll see. But there's a discussion, there will be a discussion and they will have obviously plans as to what's going to fit together. And, uh, Council on Aging, um, had a chat with Susan Beckman, who's heading the, uh, money raising initiative. And she's moving that along pretty well. Had a discussion with some of the friends, which is going to be indirectly managing some of the donations that come in, that can't come into a town. Count, it has to come into some outside account. So they put that, that she's making progress and starting to schedule some interviews with some people in town. Not in terms of donors per se, but in terms of what their thoughts are and what they think about it. And, uh, she seems to be moving along pretty well in that regard. So things have moved from, you know, it, you know, from the senior center purchase focus now to the money raising focus. Because the closing, I suppose, is still on schedule, you know, from all of us.
We're shooting for the 15th.
June?
June, that was a discussion we had when we voted on it back before town meeting to try to get it done. 15th, while Greg is still here. The condo docs, we're just reviewing. Think, actually, I, I don't want him to speak here. I believe the, uh, Masons are looking at the first draft, making their, uh, notes and get it back to us.
So it's on schedule as far as, you know. Good. But.
I know that they're, they're, they're anxious. Because they also want to get involved. Uh, I, I think that Nate has talked to John Harden from Olson Lewis, the architect. And, uh, Masons want to start getting involved with some of those discussions as well.
Do they have a timeline on when they want to start to move on?
Well, a lot of it is, it must depend on us. They don't want to get started and then find out that it's faltered or they've started their construction and it, it's not harmony with our construction and some disruption. So, but they would like to be in the ground. What was the, here's the discussion, right? Even possibly break, you know, next, you know, next spring.
Okay.
You know, which I think.
I mean, I think they, like I said, they could build it to a room.
Right.
It's not going to really affect.
Right, I mean, we have to, there's some infrastructure work that has to be done if it would impact.
Both.
Both of them, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Which would require some, spending some money that we might not have.
I'm sorry, they're, they also expand, I thought we were expanding.
No, they're.
They're expanding.
Pushing out their end.
They're, they're expanding out what 15 to the treatment plant.
The building envelope is part of a shared.
They're pushing out their end.
Condominiums, your envelope is a shared thing, even if it's just over their ropes. It's a shared expense. You're going to be careful.
I know, so that's, that's why a lot of it is dependent upon our ability to get started.
So I think, I'm not sure who's communicating with Susan about the fundraising, but she should be aware of whatever construction timeline the masons are interested in because she may want to accelerate some fundraising because it, it is a shared space. They are, it's a shared envelope that they are building.
Yeah.
And they're responsible for the addition of the blue room.
I mean, they can stop pouring slabs and stuff like that.
Understand, but I'm just saying from an insurance standpoint, that's, that envelope, the roofs and the siding is shared stuff. And we have some type of financial responsibility for the building envelope after that. They may pay for the construction, but we'll be paying for the insurance and all the other stuff.
So that, one more time, it's all dependent on us.
All right, well, that's.
They're anxious to get a status.
That's a, that's a year out.
Right, I would say probably, yeah.
But I, I, my comment was just Susan ought to be aware, if she's not, that our financial responsibility of certain things begins with that, not just our own renovation for our seniors.
Okay, that's financial responsibility, not financial.
It could be increased insurance costs, it could be whatever it is. But soon as they put a roof and siding on whatever they're doing, that is part of the common area. And we have some financial responsibility to that.
Subtle.
So.
Thing behind, like insurance, see, that's an operating activity, not a building activity.
Right.
Operating activity is going to wind up in our town budget.
Right, so what happens is that we'll call them reconstruction costs or the soft cost associated. Okay, uh, until such time as you get a certificate of occupancy. So you have money, okay, so we need a lot of money to build a building. And then once the certificate of occupancy takes over, then it becomes.
Sarah Melish has her hand up. Sarah, can you book this?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to remind people that the renovations were subject to a special permit and perhaps a variance. I can't remember. But there's a time limit on that.
Right.
And if the cha, if changes occur on what's going to occur to the building, it needs to come back before the ZBA. And, and I, you know, a variance is only good for a year, but there was an extension based on when the decision was issued by the state for three years. And I just don't know what the timeframes are. People need to be aware of that.
Right, so we've got the, you gave us, the ZBA gave the town or the, the variance, was it September, Sarah?
When was it written?
I, I think.
Oh, it was written, it was, right, it was written before October.
Right, so you, you expedited the, uh.
So you get three, so because it was issued in 2024, you have three years from that date.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
So if we.
If that's a problem, it's a problem.
It's a major problem if we're looking at that.
Still, I'm just by.
And if you, if you change.
Fundraising, she ought to be aware of these milestones.
Right, and if you change the floor plan, it needs to come before us and you lose that three-year extension.
But does it, what do you mean lose? In other words, it doesn't start again, it just ends?
So the state passed some type of law that said that any special permit or variance issued between, I think it was 1124, 1123 to 11123124, was extended three years. And so if, if they have to come back before us, that would be a new variance or special permit. I'm not sure.
Outside that window, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so then it would be a special permit's good for three years and a variance for one.
Okay.
And so if they change the footprint, footprint, they need to come before us again. So it's just something to be aware of.
Okay, all right.
That's just the start of the construction, not the completed.
Start of construction, correct.
Okay, all right, so I understand what you're saying. We're not anticipating any changes at this point.
I heard that we're going to be, so I don't know.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your insight.
Kathy, um, downtown improvement committee is meeting on Wednesday morning, the regular meeting. And at that time, they're going to present again, um, two major packages that they're working. One is the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to, um, create a communications package, like an ambassador's package. I think the intent is to give it to commercial realtors so that when they are trying to fill empty spots, they have a, you know, here's why it's wonderful to do business in Manchester. So we're going to be reviewing that Wednesday morning. And the other item was a, kind of like a business incubation program. So I'm not exactly sure what's in that, but, um, certainly it's a public meeting. Anybody is welcome to. Real hard with the chamber to try and do whatever we can to, um, make sure Manchester has a good reputation for businesses to come into. So they're focused a little bit less on the aesthetics, you know, they had their dip program 1.0 and 2.0, but with the Culver project, you know, a lot of that has kind of been put on hold. So they're putting their energy into helping the chamber and, and, and the town make the, um, the, the connections to, to get more viable businesses into the downtown.
I, I, I've spoken to Cheryl a lot lately, but there's nothing. I think, I mean, they're, right now, their focus is getting the beach up and running. And, um, you know, the junior, the, you know, the summer jam, you know, so that's, that's their focus right now.
Who has the concession there?
Captain Dusty's.
Okay, is that, it's like two-year, three-year deal?
Last year there. You know, they haven't just. Everything I've heard is that they're happy with what they're doing.
Good.
Fund, they hire local kids. And, and actually it works out very well for her because it gives her some flexibility with schedule between the three locations.
Yes.
Um, I missed the planning board, fortunately, but I was at the Harvard Advisory. And, um, two main takeaways where there was talk about the, um, enterprise fund. And we'd say not everybody on that board's in favor of having an enterprise fund for the Harvard, but say it's an ongoing discussion.
Just for clarification, did they specify, um, why?
I think there was some reluctance over. When it first starts out, there would be a small balance. And what happens when there's a need for dredging, there's a need for, you know, replacement of boats or whatever, if there's not enough money there. But I think that would be a bond by the town for dredging, or depending on what grants are built. So I, I just think there's still some back and forth there to. Yeah. Yeah, the, uh, Harvard Master Office, there's, we want to talk about that, locations with bathrooms. Bion has another idea for Reed Park. Talked about, and I was trying to imagine everybody who was talking about building being like at the edge of the water, but off to the side. And then changing that gangway to come up. So that, I guess it would have kind of a, a deck to the front of it, and then the gangway would attach to the front of the office instead of.
So you can walk and pass it off.
Yeah, but he's keeping an eye on everybody.
I guess I wasn't 100% getting what he was.
I think he was saying that it has, at some point, everything has to be upgraded over there.
Right, so I guess if they could attach it together, there might be some more grant money there.
Oh, really?
That's my understanding.
Was this the one he was talking about putting it up on pilings?
Yeah.
Over there, my flat.
Right.
So it doesn't, doesn't impact.
I don't know if.
It's.
Yeah.
That's in that project, it's Shepherd 91.
Right, so I don't know how that work. And then you got to think about monetization if it's on pilings. I don't know, so that, there was talk there.
But there's, but there's still, there's ongoing discussion.
Yeah, yeah, so it's an ongoing discussion. I don't think the same thing is set in stone. And, uh, the steering committee, there was talk about re-implementing that to, for the Harvard Master office slash bathrooms. So they might be coming to us.
Okay.
Sorry, a different committee?
No, we had a steering committee years ago for the Harvard Master Office and bathrooms.
But now I'm confused. We have a facilities committee, which I thought the Harvard Masters office was going to be in part of that. You have a Harvard management committee and we have a Harvard advisory committee. We've got three committees. Do we really need a fourth one to talk about this?
Saying that we do, I'm not saying that we don't, I'm saying that.
Yeah, it was.
This is the discussion and.
I know that I've talked to a former member of that.
Yeah, I have too.
And she's willing to get back on it. And I've spoken to a couple of people, so they'd be willing to get on it, so it's not the lack.
So a task force for the specific reason of, of, um, identifying a location and design for the Harvard Masters Office. If that gets stood up, I would recommend de-scoping that from the facilities committee we just authorized. You don't want two different committees talking about it, right? So if you start up something else, I would recommend de-scoping it from the other committee.
Well, just for that specific.
Right.
Right, we're not there, I'm just.
We've got a school, this is busy celebration, we're not visiting that anything else right now.
I was going to ask, when are they going to start meeting on next year's budget challenge? Because they have a history of taking the summer to not talk about budget. But, um, given the challenges, I don't personally feel we can wait until September to start talking about that stuff, so. I think they meet next week.
My experience is, I don't know how they do it up there, but usually the administration works on it over the summer. Then the board sees it, usually around September they start with it.
Right, but given the fact that our district has kind of run out of options to just do what they've been doing, maybe restructuring of something. And a restructuring of something might be needed.
Yeah, not, not disagree with that.
It's like, because you're exactly right, Jeff, that's, that's.
That's the usual.
But if this is not gonna be business as usual, then it can't be business as usual, I guess would be my. Convey our concern. That. We got through this one, but.
Running out of options.
Yeah. Um. Okay. Any other? Consider agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's close.
I think the town's administrators report will have to wait.
Yeah. White, you got that on there?
Oh, he, he may have had. Uh, yes. His, his report was handed to us. The Parlor House Hill. Should remember to vote. Yes, yeah. And, uh, June thirtieth is, um, the. Longevity bench for Ron Master Joe Como. At ten thirty, Master Joe will park. But we've all read that.
Yep.
Is there another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Leave it right, leave it right there.
Most insecure.
Wait, yeah.
Most insecure.